We're gonna call the meeting in order.
As required by the Republic Meetings Act nineteen seventy-five, out of good notice, this meeting is provided on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, by publication and notice in the express times of county party Democrat and by posting of said notice in municipal building on the same date. Bear Varsoni?
Here.
Mister Baylor?
Here.
Mister Beal?
Here.
Mister Grummet?
Here.
Mister McDermott? Yeah, Mister Leary and Mister Miller.
Please stand for five. Congratulations.
To the flag and to the United States of America, the Republic which stands.
Okay, first thing up we have is a presentation from Number Tipton. With STEM Brothers.
Um, we actually brought some handout like the concept plan, you mind if we just hand it out to councilors?
Yes. And then there's a large. No, no, it's still time. It's not personally.
Well, thank you. I'm Seth Fifty from Florida Bucci. I'm here on behalf of my client Greenwich Greens LLC. Uh, and I brought with me Tom Hopper. Tom, why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Tom Hopper and um, I'm the applicant uh, for the resolution of support. And um, I represent my family's other two companies, STEM Brothers Fuel and Shamshack Car Wash. We have the um, uh, several of the properties on West Avenue under contract right now. And we're going to give support for the cannabis dispenser.
And I always, whenever I'm requesting a resolution of support on behalf of the client, I always think it's helpful if I kind of explain what, what we're here to do today and what are the next steps and where we'll be back before the sanction. If that's okay, I'll just kind of walk you through why we're here and why we're asking. Uh, so Greenwich Greens uh, is the LLC that we formed uh, to apply to the state for a classified retailer license. That is a single license that allows retail of cannabis only, no manufacturing, uh, no cultivation, only retail at a select site, you get one site. Uh, as a prerequisite to filing the annual application, you must submit amongst a whole bunch of other things, a resolution of support from the town in which you intend to locate, as well as a letter from the zoning officer of the same town indicating that your use is permitted at the site you intend to apply to. Uh, once you have those two prerequisites, you can actually make the application to the state. Without those two things, you cannot apply for a license. So we're seeking that first step here with the resolution of support from the governing body, allowing us to proceed with the annual application. Once that annual application is submitted with my office and my client's help, uh, those typically are pending for about nine to twelve months under the current schedule. At the end of that process, at the end of the nine to twelve months, um, the license will be issued as long as you complete the requisite steps. And you're issued what is called a provisional license. Provisional license does not permit you to operate. All the provisional license allows you to do is to commence your build out, provided that you have local permits, to then become operational. Once you complete the build out in accordance with the plans you've submitted to the CRC, then you get a final inspection only after you've received your local CO, to be approved by the CRC to actually commence operations. So we're really talking here about a twelve to eighteen month process easily uh, from when the application is actually submitted. Once the application is in, the, the application itself will include a lot of the details that people may have questions about, but we may not have answers at this stage. Uh, in, in, to submit the application, we have to submit uh, SOPs on everything from operations, securities, restrictions, parking, signing, advertising. All of that information will be included in our application. And once that application is pending, we will be required to appear back before the planning board here for a site plan application to approve our operations. I, and that's at the which point we can kind of discuss the details of what are we going to be doing? What are we going to be doing? What's it going to look like? What are the hours? What are the, you know, what's the traffic, parking and all those questions? That people rightfully have, including things like security. Um, that site plan we, we anticipate doing while that application is pending in that nine to twelve months when we have to wait for the state. Um, assuming the site plan is granted with whatever conditions attention may impose, it's at that point that we would be able to get building permits, commence construction, get the CO, and at that point seek the state's, seek the state's final approval to allow us to commence operations and sales. So that's kind of where we're at. This is um, just the first step. This just allows us to submit the application to the state. Uh, by no means is this resolution support allow anything of operations. Obviously, there's still several steps to go there. Um, but we would very much appreciate the town's support in submitting that application. So with that, I'll turn over to Tom to talk a little bit about where this is. And perhaps any of us can answer any questions if there are any.
So uh, on the uh, the sheets that we handed out, the uh, the site that we have designated for the dispensary uh, is within your uh, the uh, enterprise zone, uh, the designated enterprise zone on West Avenue is the former Almond Tree uh, restaurant. And uh, we feel like that would be a great space for the dispensary due to the fact that it is away from any type of school park, uh, places of worship. Uh, it's not close to any residential um, neighborhood and there's easy access on and off of Route twenty-two, which um, you know, won't really uh, affect the, the downtown area very much. Um, we anticipate very good revenue, uh, similar to what they're seeing over at our neighbor in Phillipsburg Dispensary. The um, two percent uh, use tax, um, we anticipate the, to see similar numbers, which goes uh, directly to the township. Uh, as we get further along in the process, during the land use application, uh, we will certainly take into consideration any questions concerned that township has as far as parking, uh, hours of operation, uh, just uh, simply the, how the building uh, looks. Uh, obviously, the state, they have very rigorous um, standards. Uh, so uh, a lot of what we will already um, keep in mind with, I would assume would make this committee and the, the township comfortable. Uh, when it comes to security, um, obviously, we want to work with uh, local law enforcement, uh, create any type of security plan. Um, that is uh, not necessarily deemed necessary, but again, what would be comfortable for the uh, the community. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks for your presentation. Actually, keeping it brief. And uh, we're getting back, we're talking probably an executive who were legal act. And then uh, might we get back to you with something to answer? Thanks for everything. Twenty twenty-four budget discussion. What do we want to start with? Andrew giving us all the bad news?
Set me up the failure. Okay, um, so before the, before the meeting, I handed out to everyone, um, two different files. Uh, there's a single page and there's also about six pages long is the breakdown that I normally do uh, every year when I come in, I talk about the budget. Um, so for starters, right now, uh, we're thirty-three thousand dollars over the appropriation cap currently. Uh, and we're about twenty-two hundred dollars below the tax levy cap. So as we make the cuts that are necessary to bring down the appropriations, we're going to increase that amount that we're under the tax levy cap, which is good. Uh, but the amounts that I'm calculating right now for our allowable is also utilizing all of the cap uh, generated from the prior years that we're allowed to use in this year. Um, so that being said, we probably want to cut a little bit more than thirty-three thousand if possible from the budget. Right now, uh, we're looking at a five point three cent tax increase uh, or about seven point three six percent. To give the breakdown of that of just what it means for the average taxpayer, uh, the average home in Greenwich is assessed at about two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, which is about a hundred and forty-three dollars increasing here for the average household. Um, I also included at the bottom of the page by the request uh, last year, you'll see that there's a breakdown of the local tax impact for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value on the home. Um, and you'll see there that there's, there's varying amounts. So it's, it's about fifty, fifty-three, give or take uh, for every hundred thousand um, of a tax increase for the year. Uh, now on the, on the single sheet that I handed out to you, um, I know that this was a big discussion last year is that one of the, one of the difficult things that we have a lot of stuff that goes into the budget that's not controllable. Um, certain set costs that we really don't have any control over whatsoever, uh, namely the pension for PERS and PFRS, uh, your healthcare and your general liability insurance. So on that single sheet, you're going to see that the first column is what we had for twenty-three, the second column is twenty-four, and then the change year over year. Um, that last column there, if you look at the top, a tax point in Greenwich is about fifty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. Um, so those four items alone, year over year, have increased almost two tax points by a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so what that means is that off the bat, if we left everything else in the budget completely flat as to where it was last year, we're still looking at having uh, a one point seven cent increase. Uh, added to that, there was uh, an appeal for the target property, uh, which we have, we're phasing that in over, it was two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and is it twenty-five also?
Yeah.
So it was, it was three million two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of lost assessed value in twenty-four versus twenty-three. So the tax impact of that is about point four cents or about a half of the tax point. Um, so those two things combined were over two cents. That's completely uncontrollable that we can't really do anything with. Um, so the controllable part of that is three point one, three point two cents, um, which is a four point seven percent increase. So again, giving that breakdown of what that means to the average taxpayer of what we can control, uh, we're going up eighty-seven dollars for the average assessed home, and it's about thirty-one, thirty-two dollars uh, per hundred thousand of assessed valuation. So I can tell by the silence that Mr. Mayor's comment before I started was about dead on.
Well, I, I guess I've got one question, and this is probably more for Jen, but maybe. Why are commercial properties being so devalued? I mean, I, I see big money being spent on commercial properties elsewhere. Why all of a sudden in Greenwich Township are we losing assessment after assessment after assessment? I mean, Lowe's, Target, uh, Madison Properties, I mean, you know, to the tune of millions. I just find it hard to believe that if they put these properties up for sale, they're not making bank on what they paid for it.
Yeah.
It's really a ratio.
Oh, I understand it's a rate, but.
So as the, as the, as the home values escalated exponentially, it puts the ratio, I don't know. I don't really think they are truly worth less, but their assessment is going to come down as part of that whole pie.
And this is basically, basically information from five years ago.
Right.
Yeah, that's not current information, yeah.
The other thing I wanted to. I wanted to mention that I did touch base with Jen to find out uh, the most recent effects of the veteran exemptions. And in two thousand twenty-three, she had three for a total of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, she has one that's pending, and she said we should just probably assume about a million dollars a year.
Right.
For those, so.
And I agree that the, the uh, the veterans deserve, but having it come out of a municipal budget is just, that's just outrageous. That's just bad planning by the state and the federal government. I mean, we're, they served all of us, just not Greenwich Township, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, I used to be a.
I have broken up, right, right.
I did, the, the.
I've.
Fairly deserved. I have no problem getting it.
No, right. I got no problem getting it. A million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's huge. Well, so then my second question is, or comment, you said that we need to trim thirty-three thousand dollars from my budget, our budget. And I don't see where penny one of that could come from. So with your knowledge of what we're doing and the numbers here, where are your suggestions?
Well, I have one.
Okay.
I was talking to Rich just before the meeting, uh, and we do have a safe and secure grant that we're receiving every year, which is actually used for salaries. So we can actually bring down the, the police SNW by that sixteen thousand two hundred. So that gets us about halfway to where we need to be. And looking at everything else, I agree with you. We're, we're very tight. We're very tight on our numbers. I mean, looking through, it's just, there's, there's certain things that uh, like we already had moved around from the initial um, numbers that I had for the expenses. We had taken, there was thirty thousand dollars that was in the roads that we actually moved outside of the cap, because that was specifically to be used for, um, you know, what the, what the budget is.
Twenty-five percent of the FEMA uh, reimbursement for two road damages in the July rate.
Right, so we put that into capital as uh, road, road repair and improvements. Um, and then we actually brought in as a source of revenue to get us below the tax levy cap. Uh, we brought in thirty thousand dollars, we've got thirty thousand dollars in fund balance in the capital fund. So that's what that's there for. You know, it's a, it's a one-time revenue offset by a one-time expense. And we're not putting it into tax dollars, we're putting it into money that we have on hand. Um, so we've, we've done a little bit of work with that. I know that um, I had given Jen a couple of comments, which she initially sent the numbers to, you know, questions, things to look at, take a second look, and I know that her and Lisa both kind of went through a lot of the numbers. And there's a, there's not a lot, a lot else in there. Um, I do know that in the numbers that I have, I had included the Greenwich Township School Lawn and Field, that twenty-nine thousand seven hundred in there again. Went down and had initially sent me her number. She didn't have that in there. Um, so that's, that's, that's outside of your cap, so it's not going to really help us in that respect. But I don't know if, and maybe you can answer this, that was that put back into like another line when you had done your initial version?
No, I left it out because I didn't know exactly what the plan was. If we were leaving it in there, we were taking it out. I didn't know where we stood from the budget meeting supplier.
Isn't that, Joe, isn't that the money that we're fixing are twenty-five percent?
Well, not, not now, but I, that was going to be my suggestion.
That was what I thought the plan was, okay, right.
That's that line item in the, two years ago was since there, since the DPW took over the grass, tucked up the school. We used to maintain the mowers and stuff, and John recommended just leaving it there under that name and just utilize it DPW wise.
Just didn't we use that to also?
Last year, last year, it referred to Sweden.
Sweden, right, right.
Um, that, that wasn't part of your original SNW line for roads for twenty-two, right? Because she hadn't included that in there.
In twenty twenty-four, no, but I, I planned on since it wasn't in there was if we needed to use the money for that, twenty-five percent for that FEMA thing was, that would be an item to utilize that for if we did that five and five.
Okay. So again, I mean, that's, that's an item that we can take out, but that's outside of the appropriate.
Right, right, right.
So it's not helping us, right?
It's not getting us closer, right? I mean, I, I, I'm going to say this and I'm joking, but yet seriously and stuff like that. I mean, we're almost down to shutting down fire hydrants in streetlights to come up with money. I mean, the fire hydrants are a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. We got a tanker and a tanker task force in Morin County, and we just fight fires with tankers? Uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm serious, but I'm not serious on that because I think that's a stupid idea, but yeah, where are we looking?
Well, Joe, when the uh, fire hydrants are a pace setter, can you hook up to us? Don't use those without tank laws. You can't fight a fire using those hydrants, Joe.
Okay. Yeah, they fix that, yeah, they fix that again, yeah.
When it comes to the budget, I feel like I'm stuck in a hallmark movie.
Every year, it's the same story.
Well, but it is, but every year.
Well, we never have a happy ending.
No, and we keep making it worse because we, we bare bones so much. Now all of a sudden you're telling me I gotta come up with another thirty-three when it's already bare bones. And that's why I kind of put you on this boat. Show me, show me where we're, where there's fat in this budget, and I'll be more than happy to look at it. I'm not seeing it.
I got a couple items here that I want to go over. So we expended uh, nineteen thousand, thirty-eight thousand for finance administration salaries. That's jumped to thirty-three, seven hundred. Why did it increase?
That, that line actually looks a little strangely because we always budget for the twelve to fifteen hours of the finance assistant is also paid from that line. And his hours were drastically reduced, but um, we always maintained that we needed that help, so.
So what is, what is his cost?
I believe twenty-four.
Okay, while you're looking at that, we're going from.
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
How much?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand for your assistant. How many hours is that in there?
Twelve.
Twelve hours a week.
Oh, sorry, he's at, sorry, that was Tammy. He's at fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
How many hours a week?
Twelve hours.
He's a, I think twelve.
We had estimated the original budget based on twelve to fifteen.
Okay. The next, next item, Andrew, you can answer this. Auditing services are going up from thirty-seven, six to forty-three, three.
Yeah, I don't know. I would have to look at what my actual uh, really was for my proposal from this year, but yeah.
Uh, payroll services, forty-nine, and these are small numbers, but hey, uh, forty-nine uh, twenty-two going to seventy-three hundred. Is there a cheaper payroll service out there that we can use that you know of?
Lowest budget.
Well, if we have to switch again, you know?
Yeah, we do.
Um.
It isn't extended for us.
I think I'm actually waiting for our bills for our.
I was going to say, that doesn't, that does not look.
So we still didn't get a bill for the WQs that they print for us and the end of year reports, or the ACA reports, the healthcare report, so. So Bill, if you look under payroll services, the twenty-three adopted budget, the amount was forty-five hundred. It became necessary to make a twenty-eight hundred dollar transfer because that was one of the ones that we bottomed out, yeah. So that's how we came up with that seventy-three hundred.
Got it. Uh, tax collection salary, twenty-one, four, seventeen to twenty-six. And we, what's the increase for?
Is that um, before transfer of sewer channel? Um, oh, I think.
I think those you have flipped, right?
Yes, yes.
That's actually the.
Yep, that's actually the.
The assessor.
Hold on.
No, I'm sorry, that.
Correct. I see it now.
Yeah, the, the, the assessors prior year.
Okay.
The twenty-five, four hundred, that's actually taxed. So the tax is going up to twenty-six from twenty-five.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the. I'm looking at the line uh, proposed twenty-six thousand eighty-five dollars.
Yeah, it's actually supposed to be under the tax assess, like those lines are reversed, so. Jen's salary was twenty-five, she's going to go to twenty-six. So Eloise is reversed. So I have to, I have to double check these.
I suppose.
Yeah, all of them. So it's going from twenty-one, four, seventeen to twenty-two, oh, six, one.
Tax collection, though, uh, one from uh, other expenses, eighty-nine, it's not much, ten thousand. In that figure, is the forty-one hundred dollar bill that hasn't been paid by the school district?
All of that. Uh, it could help offset that. There was an expense for the uh, you know, the printing of the bills, the purchase of the bills and the mailing.
Right, I asked them about it last night where the, where my check was for forty-one hundred. I'm still waiting for an answer. So can we apply that check since it was last year to this?
That would be as an offset to your expense?
Yeah.
So we would take it as a reduction of the expense?
Anything, you know, I'm trying to come up with, I'm going to be asking for uh, the chief, and I sent you an email earlier, said I achieve uh, for what's the salary going to cost for the SRO officer from September through December? I need to read that number because I don't think that's in this budget. Because I'm going to ask the board to uh, fund it for the remainder of this year.
Approximately eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars excluding uh.
So nineteen thousand, is that in FICO?
For all the other stuff. Excluding those numbers. I don't, I, I don't have those numbers uh, I'd have to get those shit. But that should be salary.
Yeah, but we'll need the FICO and that. So if I say twenty-two thousand, Andrew, do you think that would cover?
Five and a half, yeah.
Seven and a half, so that's fourteen hundred dollars right there. Okay, so I want to add twenty-two thousand to this budget. Hopefully, I'll get some support here. And the other thing I talked to Joe Mexie about, I want to take over the snow plowing for the school district because they are in dire straits. And they're, uh, they've been cut almost six hundred thousand dollars and, you know, they, their budget was approved last night to be submitted to the county superintendent. And uh, they're looking at a four, uh, four cent increase. And uh, this year so far, they've paid out uh, seventy-one hundred dollars in uh, uh, to PIP for snow plowing and uh, it should be six hundred dollars less because there was some consulting that uh, they didn't call us to do, and they had PIP to it. So they're at about sixty-five hundred dollars commercially to have uh, snow plowing done. It's been a light year. But you know, twenty years ago, when I sat on that school board, we reversed, you know, we had the shared services agreement with the town. It was privately done that, you know, for over a hundred thousand dollars back there between snow plowing and cutting the lawn, and we had a shared service agreement way back when, over twenty years ago, and I think we need to bring that back because, you know, maybe next, we do it this year, you know, into, you know, the uh, winter of next year, and maybe their budget might change, who knows, but just trying to help them anyway.
Well, I know Bill, Joe and I talked earlier uh, about that and I know you need a piece of equipment. Well, he needs a piece of equipment and, and in theory, a very experienced person to operate that, the machine with the box on it. That's not something he's going to stick a rookie in.
Right. Do we have anybody?
Well, you, you're taking an experienced person off the road who's putting him over in the schools, which Joe was talking about having to dedicate that person to the schools and them not partake in the road.
It this way, our roads come first, we do their roads next, you know, and they're just going to have to wait. If our roads aren't done, there's no, no need to get their, their roads done at the same time. Uh, yeah, most of the time they came up to school. So there's no rush to get over to the school.
So with that being said, Joe, does that eliminate the next man and it just puts the burden on the rest of the department?
It puts the burden after a thirty-six hour snowstorm day of eight to nine guys that probably another four hours worth of work. After being up thirty-six hours, dude, and I'm thinking of mild, well, big snowstorm.
Right.
Well, honestly, working.
Obviously, more work, that's more work.
Right, right.
Uh, they're not up thirty-six hours straight, are they, Joe?
We get our breaks in between, but we're here a whole time at Black and Paul, Police Hall, with South Penn, Hope Fort and Pro-Am, where we're not home and fed, resting.
No, I'll make the motion later and we'll see where it goes. That's all I have. Well, I, I, I don't think it's a matter of anyone wants to do it. I don't know if we have a way to facilitate it, like.
Right, I mean, that.
I didn't check out guys.
Right.
That are beat up from thirty or thirty-six hours and add another four or six hours.
Right.
And.
I see that point.
I mean, the other issue would be is the higher, we're one of the part timers, but they're not going to come in just to do four hours. You know, who's going to time, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's always the problem. That's our problem with a lot of our workforce is we have so few hours, right? People only want to apply. I mean, who wants to drive here and work for two hours a week?
Right.
You know, and stuff, so. And, and so that would be the same issue.
Joe, does the county, I know the state works in shifts. Does the county work in shifts? Or do all of their guys come in from A to, to close?
They, they come in, they call everybody in, but they don't get everybody.
No, I understand that.
They don't do it, they don't do it.
No, because like I know what the state's twelve hours on, twelve off, right? And they have another team to come in behind it.
Yeah.
Except for the subs are out there the whole time, though, they don't really.
I understand. Example, Bloomsbury, they split their, the regular guys there, they got like eight. Four of them are on the one twelve, four on the other, and they have their other state employees that offer the plow stuff.
Right, right, right.
Other departments fill in with those guys that.
Yeah, and those cubs are assigned to a shift too, though.
Yeah.
So like if you're a sub, like from another state agency, you're gonna be told to come in from six A to six A or six A to six.
Yeah, uh, uh, at a state agency, but I'm, I'm just gonna take. Even the private, and only because I'm the only one of the, PIPs guys are out there the entire time now.
Oh, oh, you're those guys.
Those guys, you know, so they're the ones that are taking. They're the brunt of. The snow removal for the state per se, and they're working those twenty-four and thirty-six hours when they pay.
Yeah.
So. Well, as Bill said, when we get to that later.
Certainly. Okay. Anything else you wanna go with? Last two on the bottom of the first page, uh the uh final budget for twenty-three for street and road salaries. Going from two forty-nine to three oh four, so that's roughly fifty-five thousand dollars. Other expenses, one fifty-six, seven, going to a hundred ninety-two, so I need an explanation on those increase.
What you just added in on this, what did you add in for increases for the bike? Did you just three percent?
Yep, that, that's where that, that's how we just keep going.
She just added in three percent.
Three percent, is that okay? And then the next question is, I don't even think we had a discussion on what. What salary increase we're gonna uh look at this year?
No, we haven't, so.
Was there, was there an additional employee added for road?
What's that?
An additional employee added for road in twenty-four versus twenty-three?
I was looking to make a full-time position, but there is no additional.
Okay. So that's a little bit more than three percent.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh fifty, fifty-five thousand, uh, uh, three percent of two forty-nine is seventy-four hundred dollars roughly. So I think we need to look at that line carefully, look at the next line as well, other expenses, you know. It's, you know, other expenses gone up almost, you know, thirty-six thousand dollars, so. You know. So what are other expenses?
Yeah, the ones up here in three percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you know, other expenses, last one? The one of thirty-six grand?
Well, I think that's everything from, oh, well, probably part of it, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, other expense. That would be part of our new obligation for stormwater management in the catch spaces, right? That's under other expenses.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, other expenses are uh, um, your road, uh, your road maintenance programs. Um, hot tarring the cracks and such of that nature.
Well, the also, the, the, where you're looking at the increase under road, other expenses. I had the thirty thousand dollars in there for the twenty-five percent to show it somewhere.
So that's in the, that one ninety-two number?
That's already taken out.
Oh, that's already out.
That's already taken out.
Yep.
So we, we have with the, with the stormwater, we have fifteen thousand dollars of a grant coming in for stormwater. In, in twenty-four. Was that taken into account in that?
Yeah, I never knew that was coming in. I was up there in pressure, I was, you know, ready to receive those.
That grant is twenty-five thousand for a, a tier A town like Greenwich. They got, we got the first part of it, I'm not sure if that was, Ken, was that fifteen or was it ten? That we got for the first chunk of the grant for the stormwater management. Well, 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 the total, the total twenty-five, we got the first part and the second part, we're gonna get twenty-four. So that, so it's either ten or fifteen, uh, so that's, that's. That's what that is.
And Joe, I imagine the other expenses are, you know, obviously. You, 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 you need to somewhat budget and prepare for, and you, I'm sure you have a working number between the sinkholes. You know, uh, the repairs and things of that nature, right?
Yeah.
That's all gonna be in there.
I showed the increased that, the other, the other variable in there, I don't. Winter is over now, but when I was working on this, I didn't know what we were expended in the salt. Now, two thousand twenty-three spent about. I'm gonna say only gather seventeen thousand dollars in salt this year here. I know I'm at thirty-seven or thirty-nine thousand. That's a, that's a variable.
Right.
Usually estimate uh about a thousand ton of salt, a, a wind. This year it was sixty-eight fifty, but there's sixty-eight thousand dollars budget I gotta estimate as the potential use. If, if winter would have left, then what they were expecting, we would have used. Nine hundred thousand ton of.
Right.
But we got, well, I gotta anticipate that.
No, right, yeah, no, absolutely, sure.
Uh, out of the sky. Or that's gonna affect other things if we don't anticipate.
So that's what's all kind of including in that other expenses.
I try to figure that and what we, what we gotta put out in the blacktop, fixing sinkholes that we don't know that open up. And then the little bit of storm drain repairs that we were doing. Now, I, I forward to you, you have to look at some of the things that we need to do for our new permit. For the stormwater to have all of the remaining outlets. With the curve uh edge change by two thousand twenty-eight.
Did you, I don't, you know, I didn't see that in a regular pack. Lisa, did they get?
I might, I might not got that.
Oh, all right.
I don't think so, not this meeting.
I mean, twenty twenty-four retrofits and upgrades just to try to keep. On pace with what they require by twenty twenty-eight, because we have to do like twenty percent of every catch base and over and certain. Grates and things have to be replaced regardless.
That's just the curve heads. We have, right now, my number was, we have forty-three percent of our seven hundred and sixty-four. Stand storm drains in the road retrofitted. At least five hundred and some that need to be retrofitted by two thousand twenty-eight. I plan, I, I propose the plan to do about a hundred and two to a hundred and four of them. Per year for the next five years, including this year. At this year's Morris County co-op price, that was roughly twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty-three thousand, six oh four is what you got.
But I also have to plan an escalation because that's this year in price. If we bought all that equipment just to do that. This year is a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
One fifteen.
One fifteen. That we have to figure an escalation if we don't buy all that for each year for the next five years.
And it's not like there's an option on it. Again, this is, you know, a mandatory coming down from the state kind of thing and.
Unfunded mandatory.
Unfunded mandatory, right?
Yes.
Right. You know, so on this bottom line item right here, Joe's got built into, uh, his proposed on that one ninety-two is. Twenty-three, six oh four.
For the uh.
For the retrofit, right.
Would come out of this, this repair to the street.
Right.
If I can uh just mention something.
Sure.
On this point. We talked about the twenty-five thousand, which was the initial uh grant. For various parts of, of these upgrades, which included both soft cost mapping changes and so forth, which typically go to. Us, um, and also some other hard costs. And I know Donna from our offices worked with Joe and whatnot. Unfortunately, tier eight towns only got twenty-five thousand total, and the second half of that had, we haven't even got yet. But the Highlands has monies. That we were in the process of putting a letter together. Uh, and just send it in, the harm, the harm or, or, you know, real downside, just see what you can get. So we're gonna be asking for. Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty, sixty K. Uh, of Highlands grant monies for these MS four related upgrades. So they're, and, and from everything we've seen and heard, it's, it's, we're gonna get the money. Uh, I, I can't promise you when, uh, and so forth, but, but so there is. A, a, at least a tangible chunk of additional grant monies that will be coming our way. For some of this work, which was outside of the first twenty-five, which was from the state, this is. Additional dollars from the Highlands.
Right, and with that being said, that, that's good to know that the potential's there, but it doesn't, we can't put, we hope. To put a glimmer of positivity maybe or help.
So I was just taking a minute looking back at the AFS for two thousand twenty-three and that fifteen thousand. We did receive it, but we never appropriated it to spend it out of the grant, so we've never charged anything against that grant yet. So it was paid essentially then out of the budget last year, any, anything related to that. It never hit the grant, so we do have that fifteen thousand. To spend, and we also had twenty thousand two-ten, which was the safe and secure going back to talking about. Um, with the, with the police center, because that's, risk, correct me if I'm wrong, it's dedicated to just one police officer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so. That number we should be able to use, now the sixteen thousand two hundred, that's the twenty-four?
That's uh, twenty-three into twenty-four, so it ends last, uh, actually today.
Okay.
Um. And uh. Today or yesterday, and then today or yesterday starts for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Because we haven't gotten that sixteen thousand two hundred, and that's not currently in as an anticipated revenue or. Or an expense in the budget. It gets directly offset, it has no impact, it just goes on both sides. And that gives us the ability to put it into our grant fund and then spend it from there. So we do have the, the, the fifteen thousand that we can spend out of the grant money related to, to stormwater and twenty-four. So if we could take down a little bit of that one ninety-two by the fifteen, it's still there, it's just in the grants. Right, it's still the same amount in, in total, we're just spending it out of the grant. And then the same thing with the twenty thousand two-ten, um, we would have that available to us as well.
And that would also eventually come out of the one ninety-two figure?
The, no, the, the safer and secure would hit directly to police salaries and wages.
So can we apply that to the anticipated twenty-two thousand for the SRO officer?
Uh, well, it would, it wouldn't hit directly to that, but it would go directly into the police S and W, so the net effect would be. Will be the difference about seventeen ninety of an increase if you did the twenty-two thousand for the SRO as a separate line. Because you'd be reducing police S and W by the twenty thousand two-ten. But then you'd be offsetting it by the increase of the twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, Joe. I have another, uh, gee, well, everyone's well aware that the fire department successfully receiving seventy-two thousand dollar grant. Last year, I asked the town permission to apply, the one faucet with that was, we have to purchase or. The equipment has to be purchased before the grant, by being, uh, question for Andrew is. The town said that would help us out because fire department don't have that money, how the, how the town. Have that funds available until the grant backfills it.
Uh, we could, we could put it into a. Capital outlay. Line. Um, and, and, and spend it that way, but as you're saying, like, we have to be able to represent that we have the funds on hand. So if we don't designate, if we don't designate it in some way, we, we can't do that. I don't know if we have.
Was it like four hundred thousand in cap? Still available or?
In the capital project?
Yeah. So did it wade down to like forty-five thousand this year? I don't remember.
It went down.
Andrew, the police department has similar. Problems like the fire department, we have our licensed labor branch, hundred and thirty-one thousand. But you haven't sent it to.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, but for that, you have to have any, you have to have the cash on hand to. You have to show that you have a funding source for it before you qualify for that, is that the same?
We were already awarded it, um, and it has to be set by. Like, they, we actually were awarded, I think in twenty twenty-two, but they didn't free it up for you to use it. There was all kinds of issues with, um. Just, um, squad equipment, you using whatnot, like, and whatnot, but they just kind of released us to start spending it. But I think you, uh, it only happened till, happened now.
Okay, so it might be a little bit of a different situation, correct me if I'm wrong, I might have missed her. If we have a grant that we've already gotten approved. We would consider that to be a grant receivable, I mean, we go into our federal and state grant fund and we'd be able to spend against the receivable. Is, is it a requirement that you have to show a funding source for it?
No, I'm just asking because I didn't have the funds, but we have to.
When he receives. Then he's gonna submit for reimbursement.
Right, so then if we go through, essentially, okay, no, I'm, I'm.
Be own and invoice all that.
Right. It's not a matter of us just saying we had, it's a matter, we literally have to pay the bill, the lift rate.
Right.
And then they'll get their money and they reimburse us.
So, so there's, there's two routes, okay, so it's just, it's just like a regular grant then, so it's just the difference being is that it's reimbursed, it's not upfront. Um, in that case, basically what you do is you put it into the budget as a revenue and as an appropriation. It would go over into the federal and state grant fund and it would be set up as a grant receivable. And it would be set up as an appropriated reserve, so then we can spend against that appropriated reserve. And what that does, it creates an interfund with the current fund because the federal state grant fund doesn't have money in it. Um, when the money comes back in, it would go back into the current fund after you get your reimbursement checks. And it would wipe out the balances of it. So it's a zero net effect, you don't actually, if you don't actually have to have, there's some grants that you're required to show that you have a certain amount of. Cash on hand that you can dedicate in order to qualify for that grant. I thought that that was the situation.
Oh, I, I used the town sage, state sage, and it's sort of DC.
Okay, so.
It's all through that, it's right from the state.
Okay, so that's, that's then what we would do is we would add those amounts into our budget numbers here. Again, it's, it's a zero tax impact, it's, it's just showing that it's a revenue and it's completely offsetting. Um, the appropriation which would go outside of cap.
Anybody else on that? Yeah, okay, so let's talk about um some revenue. Okay, how much interest did we gain in twenty twenty-three?
Oh. Thank you, Bill, for a good topic. So, yeah, that's good. We, we knew that we were gonna do well on our interest this year. We, when we had done two thousand twenty-three's budget, if you remember. Um, we had already exceeded the amount that we had budgeted, I believe at that point, for uh two thousand twenty-three's revenue, so. We wound up budgeting a hundred and fifteen thousand in two thousand twenty-three and we earned four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of interest revenue.
So we're up about three hundred and four thousand? That is good.
Okay. Over, yeah.
So we're over, so some of that money was earned on our bond money and.
Correct.
Can we use that money to offset this? Can we use that money to offset this or where does that money go?
There's, there's a cautionary tale here.
Okay.
We're gonna spend that six million dollars now. So we've we've already got. Well, yeah, right. So that's that goes back into your fund balance because it's over the amount that we anticipated, which is good. Um now, that being said, um that was the lion's share of what we earned back in fund balance this year. That was the majority of our revenues exceeding our expenses. Um I had asked Shannon and she had gotten me the interest numbers. Do you know, do you still have that, what the interest numbers were so far?
Yeah, so I think the capital uh CD is already at twenty thousand and then so far at the end of. February, all our accounts uh PNC is at thirty one thousand and TD Bank is at fifteen. No, together they're at fifty two thousand dollars, I think.
So far for the first three months of the year.
Yeah, well, for the till the end of February because the bank, yeah. Yeah, because the bank savings for March are not out yet, so. Yes.
So. When do, how often should we be if you're looking, because the interest rates aren't going down, some are going up. How often should we be looking at those accounts and say, hey, let's go to instead of PNC, you go to Unity or you go to Bank of America?
You can look as often as you like. Um it's. So I believe that is statutory. Rule that you have to not look, it's it it could probably be influenced.
These accounts in a three month CD or whatever in the money market.
These are just regular accounts. The only thing in a CD is that six million dollars still.
Okay, and what interest rate is that right then?
Oh, um five something, yeah, like part two the last time I think you know that. We've been doing it month to month now, so.
Yeah, I would just check. Weekly, make sure it's not, you know, where it is, you know, just stay on top of that because it's really only our real source of revenue unless we. Raise recreation piece. I'm only kidding.
So we did part of part of trying to uh get under the tax cap. We did creep that number up a little bit this year. Um being that we were already at over seventy thousand in the first two months, um we went from a hundred and fifteen up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um now that that's.
Raise it up a little more.
Like I, like I said, my my main concern is that the lion's share of the fund balance that we did regenerate in two thousand twenty three was from that interest. So I don't want to sell a short going into next year of having a lower amount. Um and also as a result, at least on the on the projection that I had given you. Um with with everything from Shannon so far, we decided that because we regenerated three hundred sixty five thousand dollars of fund balance. It was, oh, actually, it was a little bit more than that, but it was probably best to only go up to that level. Um. Just to kind of steady the ship.
Bill, on February twenty sixth, we rolled it over for five point one three.
Five point one three, okay. That's better than what we were getting.
More returns when we like like five point one four or so.
So what do you recommend as so far? Are we under the cap, that the thirty, down that thirty three thousand or whatever we had to get down?
So I can go through what I've what I've moved so far from our discussions and I've got it all highlighted and I can reverse it at any given moment. Um but just to go through, I took the uh the the forty one hundred dollars out from the collection of taxes that we have discussed. Um I took out both the sixteen thousand two hundred, which is gonna be the safe and secure that we're gonna add in. As a grant. Um and I took out the twenty thousand two ten that we already had that was unappropriated, that we're gonna appropriate and use. Out of the federal state grant fund this year. Um I added back the twenty two thousand right now for the SRO, so that's in there. Um. I believe. Yeah, that's all that I, that's all that I've changed in here right now. And that puts us fourteen thousand six forty one still over the cap.
Did you take the fifteen out of for that grand, the stormwater grant out of Jones?
There you go. That that, yeah, you're gonna be uh like three hundred, four hundred dollars below.
And what about my four hundred, uh forty one hundred dollar bill from the uh school district from last year? Can that get?
The the forty one hundred dollars coming in is being used to offset the uh tax. Because that was the ten thousand reducing by the forty one hundred for the O eight.
Yeah. So we're good with the cap, I mean, at this point, right?
You are three hundred and fifty nine dollars below the cap. Wow, we are thirty six thousand.
With the one point seven cents. For the all control and things, that that's where we stand, right?
So they're not going anywhere. Right, yeah. Um so right now.
Right now, if we wanted to, we could go with that budget.
You're good. You don't wanna give another peek before you do. Yeah, yeah.
We're 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 reset at basically at this point.
Correct. Um so what that means, just to give you the breakdown of the way that, you know, I presented it earlier, so. That right now is a four point seven cent increase uh or six point five five percent. Over over the previous year's tax. That's a hundred and twenty seven dollars. The average home assessed at two hundred seventy two thousand dollars. Um and it's about forty seven dollars for each hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So forty seven for a hundred, ninety four for two hundred, one forty for three hundred and one eighty seven for four hundred.
And that's where we're at now. We didn't even say we were gonna find it. We even told the department that they couldn't get any. And we had four cents.
And again, that, you know, going back to that sheet that I'd given you earlier, um two point one cents out of that is completely uncontrollable.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
And I believe, I'm trying to find my notes here, the school district was at like four point nine. So their taxpayers are looking at a ten cent. Looks like a ten cent based on what we're discussing tonight. And they adopted their budget last night, so.
And you're talking for the average homeowner, two hundred seventy dollar increase.
Two hundred seventy dollar.
Get up to the upper ends, which is a lot of homes for half a million dollars or more.
Right.
I mean, those people are paying a lot now, so.
I did, I did just want to discuss one other thing when it comes to the revenues. One of the revenue items that I included in my packet on the uh the second page in there. You'll see is capital fund, inter fund. Um the the reason that we have that in here is because in twenty three, we actually had um. Uh the second page of my of my six page packet.
Okay.
Ninety eight thousand seven forty five.
Right, so what that represents is that was expenses that were paid out of the current fund last year. Uh on behalf of the the capital fund, so that's obviously not a recurring revenue. The reason that we did that is because it will essentially, we needed it. Um and we're allowed to. So that's kind of the way that the reason that we did that, but it's just uh that's something that as long as all the inter funds are cleared out by the end of the year. We won't need that in the future, but I just want to make sure that that you understand why that that's there. And also, just um just so you're aware, the amount that we're using right now for delinquent taxes is two hundred ninety five thousand dollars. You had about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of delinquent taxes at the end of twenty three. Um we're just trying to be a little bit conservative because again, the amount that we receive over that is gonna come back into our fund balance and make us healthier. So we don't want to overdo that number. Um I had it a little bit higher. And I just wasn't as comfortable with it. And once we were already underneath the tax levy cap. I didn't see a point in leaving it so high when we had the ability to regenerate more fund balance instead.
One other item on this sheet here, unemployment. Why was it blank through the proposed budget in twenty four?
It's in with the other insurances, I think. Yeah, yeah.
Should it be separate that we should have?
Well, it's separate on an MSI, just didn't do it out there. Yeah, yeah.
But it's in there.
Yeah.
Now, one other topic that some people might not be, might not like it, but we got a lot of money in open space. Our police patrol, our parks. We're talking to another school district, not our school district, they're kind of a little flustered cash. So he's saying that for their SRO officer, their maintenance department, they're pulling out some funds to cover that. Not all of, maybe like twenty percent. From their preschool. Funding that they get because preschoolers usually need the SRO office. So is there anything that we can do? And I know open space, I'll hear it at our next meeting. You know, can we take a percentage of their overall expense, whether it's two, three percent, something like that?
The the thing with the open space is it's so specific and it needs to be used for purpose and maintenance essentially of open space.
That's it. Yeah, it makes you feel any better. I don't know if I would have been supporting that.
Okay.
I I I just feel like open space tax, if you're gonna shuffle money, you'd readily add an alternate pack.
Right.
That's my personal feeling on it. So I I, so if it makes it feel any better, I don't know. I'm just trying to find some. I understand, I understand, but I don't like messing with the open space owner of his face.
Yeah, I know. We're very healthy.
Went through the years ago with, was when they did it with the super authority, so I I don't want to get to do something like that. It's all in the facts and.
Right.
But I'm only one vote there. No, man, that's uh. Okay, we have anything else for Andrew?
I don't think so.
Not again, made us all cry, you can leave, I guess. The problem is. Our picture is never gonna get any better unless we come up with a revenue search, a better revenue.
It's historical than uh we ever.
Yeah.
And that limits us.
I I know, when you say that, people like to hear it because they're saying, oh, you've got plenty of money, but we don't. And. I I don't know what the answer is, there's well. With that area redevelopment is obviously part of it, but. Uh I I think we even need a bigger revenue source for that, you know, not just for us, but for schools as well, but. The cost of everything is what, what's the cost of being here? And there's only X amount of cash payers, so everybody, it gets divided by that unless you come up with a, you know. That's not gonna be resolved by next time.
No, it's not resolved by next time, but.
I mean, some people are gonna have to be willing to part with some of the view. That everybody so cherishes even though they don't own it.
Yeah, but that brings other expenses. Fill in the field. None of that ain't porn.
Yeah, it it just seems like everything's stacked against us when it comes to the state. They just don't wanna spend anything this part of the state the same time.
Well, they look at our, you know, our per capita household, sixty seventh in the state. I mean, they're like, oh, these guys are roll off.
Yeah, that's an easy answer, but that's what we tell the stories. A lot of people love, obviously it's a maintenance, there's a lot of people under that. Yeah, yeah. You know, even with, like, that's why I feel bad for the taxes when you say you're gonna raise them. It's paying up on a lower end home, but on the higher end homes, a lot, a lot of these people didn't pay six or seven hundred thousand dollars for their homes. I mean, it's it's obviously money they've earned, if they, if, you know, they made money on it, but they're not selling, so.
Not liquid money.
Yeah, it's not liquid money and you're charging them more to live here, right? It's. Well, we can sit our wheels out. Yeah, so I guess we're just gonna have to uh. Where I have to digest yourself, Andrew, when uh.
I think I, Lisa and I have been talking, there's just one more thing before I'll 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 leave you in peace for the evening. Um I guess we were looking at trying to do a tax rebound at some point soon. Um and one of the things, just so you're aware that you can do it, is you can do that by a special emergency razor over the course of five years. So I know, I think we're all up to date on our tax match, right?
Um I had actually just asked.
No, that email, Lisa emailed me today about that very. Yeah, okay, so uh we've got it, we, they're just about wrapped up.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, they're they're very close.
Got to cut your five years down to four years, right?
Yeah, okay, so once, we're close. Once that's all done, then we can move on to doing a rebound. Um.
Which we anticipate would cost a minimum of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it would.
Right out of the five years?
Yeah.
And it would, you know, fix our ratio problem at least, you know, for now and uh would prevent some of those big appeals.
And statistically, half go up and half go down?
They always say a third, a third.
They're lost, they're down, they're the same. And the and the uh appraisal firms always say that's not true, but.
Pretty accurate. Yeah, you get bone gall.
We should be, I think we should be told by the county, not by the clerk, telling us we need to rebound.
So the county is very much, I think they're they're holding off on telling everyone because of the the inflation with the COVID prices. Everybody knows that that, you know, there's a ratio problem, but nobody wants to jump too quick and.
Nobody.
The county announced this, it's for everybody. Oh, you'll get my vote.
Not gonna be voting for that, you know.
The the only thing that I would say is that it doesn't prevent, like, like Lisa's saying, big appeals.
We'll take them one at a time.
Um alright, okay.
Thank you, Andrew. You're very welcome, everyone. That was the.
Yes, thanks, Ray. I'd say don't come back until you have better news.
Okay, anybody need a break before we go to the next?
I'll make a most for a five minute break.
Okay, all a favor?
Get us a full brain.
So we did on the house.
Yes, yes.
So. Oh, we talked about it right here?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we did also. On the half acre. Um and as of right now, I mean, we can, we should be on the former restaurant. So they're like, yeah, great. So they'll be out probing. We're actually moving.
Together to get started.
Depending on the instruction.
Haven't really gotten started. The old building. So there was a garage, they bought it to their property next to it. And they, there was a garage on that. Because that's gonna be. And then they get their COVID permits, not for me, obviously.
So. In our agreement, we do have money allocated to stay in escrow, to fill the gases further. So at least.
Okay, Conrad or?
The sellers now have a lot of documentation. Do you sell it? Do you prefer to buy it? Do you like to buy it?
Well, he's not a young man, but he's. Problem. That's all.
As of right now.
Well.
We want to talk to.
Is everybody ready to go back?
I know, how are you?
Never, thanks for the. I just don't know if you could. And you got people walking on trails and stuff. And that's some good ideas.
Have you already found instructions?
Cause I was gonna say, like, could they funnel money from that?
Yeah, I was, I was typically. Okay, yeah, sure.
Everybody here? Okay, Lisa, let's go back on the record here.
We're set, um.
I'm looking for a motion to come back in session.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, uh, we're gonna, let's do the bid opening for the piece of land up by the, uh. Wall there, so New Brunswick, you know, uh.
What's happening?
We only got one. And Shammy Shine Car Wash's officers offer a bid of one hundred and five thousand dollars for the reference parcel. So, that's, uh. What do we have to do on this now, Mike?
Um, we, cause that was the minimum, right? All right, um, you can just take a motion to authorize the award of the bid to Shammy Shine based on. Cause in the letter, it had the terms and conditions, they have to come up with a deposit, and a certain amount of time, we'll get them a contract, and we're good to go.
Okay, so I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on it? I'd say I'm glad to see that you got it, cause I think you guys take very good care of your property here, and I see your properties all over. Uh, I just think you're a good, uh, corporate, uh, neighbor and partner, so. Congratulations on it, I guess, and then with that, real.
Mayor Varsley?
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, yeah.
Looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for February fifteenth, anybody wanna make that motion? Second, and the questions, comments, corrections, deletions? Roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Epstein?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the Treasury report for the March bill list and the interim bill list.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions, comments, anything pulled?
Well, it's nothing pulled, but, and again. There were some really huge bills in here from a variety of different people, and I just hope that we're all doing our jobs, looking at them. Was ever read delays onto those specific ones, you know, and I'm talking everything from engineering to attorneys to IT. And, and stuff, I'm not wanting to pull, but, well, I sure would like to see what some of those bills were about, and I just didn't get a chance. Cause we just didn't get them in time, this bill list here really doesn't tell me what they are. So I'm just hoping that everybody's kinda reviewing them to make sure, cause there are some smoking bills in here this time around. That's it.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the tax collectors' tax inquiry course in February eighth, one second. Like his comment, question, roll call?
Mayor Varsley?
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah.
Smith on it, yes.
Police Department Chief, do you have anything to add to your. Written report?
I don't think so, other, other than, uh, just noting that sixty one stops, it's on. Pretty high for, especially for the shortest month of the year. And, and obviously, the, uh. The correspondence we got from the gentleman on eighty three road about the, uh, increased truck, uh. Traffic destruction is rather.
Anybody have any questions to the chief, or anything? Joe, DPW, we have anything to add?
No, I don't, only if anybody else has any questions.
Yeah, I do have one, Mr. Bagley on Betty, Betty's Road, did you work with the chief at all about?
Well, I got an opportunity, I went down to, uh, down in. And see if something would work out.
Okay, cause I. I don't know if anybody knows, I think, you got one homeowner on, uh, Baby's Road. Just getting hammered with trucks running across his front lawn, and, uh, I felt bad for the guy again, two weeks ago, he sent in. He literally just got done raking it off, put his post up so they could see where the corner is, he said by the time he got back to his garage, the truck came and ran it all over.
And, and that's an area that I don't even understand why GPSs are sending you down that, I mean, there's, there's no reason. For any tractor trailer to be on that road, and I mean, they should almost know it right from the work out.
Well, you know, even on South Main Street, there's times I see trucks going really slow, almost like the guys are like, this can't be right. You know, but they're still going on.
No, they're still going on.
And then, some of the companies are just raising it now, now, and they just fly right down the road like. Catch me, catch me if you can, you know? Okay, anything, anybody have anything for Joe then?
Uh, one thing, Joe, how'd you make out over at the school, did you level that off?
No, I did not, the, uh, the bill needed to cure a little bit more tomorrow morning, and we're, I'm thinking even to keep the buses off of it. And so over the weekend, but I wanted it capped off because of the rain coming this weekend. The asphalt plant's supposed to open Monday, but I'm gonna hold off, cause I wanted to see if it settles.
Yeah, they had a pretty good sized sinkhole over, uh, at the school, elementary school. It was called in as a. Right, yeah, yeah.
And, and then actually, Joe, I do have something else, um, I, we had, we've had a request. For a, uh, a dead end sign to be put up on our road?
Correct, uh, yes.
Are we able to do that?
Lane, I got, I, I checked inventory, I do have a, not a through street that we can put up at the end of that road.
Okay. Township clerk's report, Lisa, you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to mention it, it's, um, it's not confirmed yet, but the new insurance company does offer a grant for one percent of your total assessment. Which for us would be about forty eight hundred dollars, which we may be able to use to offset some IT expenses. Um, for things that the insurance company is also requiring, but has been on sort of the. List of the things that need to be done around here, so, including the multi-factor authentication, so. Um, I'm getting an estimate, there is an estimate, who's on following your packets tonight, and I'm gonna work with him to see how quickly we're gonna fly to that grant, so we can. You know.
Yeah, that's the way, and I mean, surprise, they're just doing that now, that's like five years behind, that's okay. Whatever they want, or, you know.
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
zoning and code enforcement, does that have no reports, Paul, you have any?
Well, I'm a little surprised there isn't a report in here, but, uh, you know, I know Jeff's been in court. On a variety of different subject matters, um, everything from Drake's joints and tires, he's going back again this Thursday. He's just recently written a whole list of violations. Um, everything from tractor trailer parking, tractor parking. Um, maintenance issues and things, so, uh, there's, he's very active in what he's doing right now, so.
Cracking trail problems, like the one up by Nate.
Oh, yeah, well, a- and again, just to help you out without getting. And Eloise and Jennifer are gonna try to work with Jeff a little bit, the, the information. The, the way the system works is you send a letter, and then you'll literally wait for four to five weeks for it to come back to say, nobody picked it up or signed it. And then it turns out that, that, that address isn't even an accurate address for that person, and. Jeff doesn't have access to actually who currently owns the property, so it's woad him up a couple of times, so what. You would think would take four to five weeks, ends up taking ten to twelve weeks to make a communication, and the one that you're referring to falls right into that. Lillian, but I, I think he's made some headway on the subject matter, and we're gonna get him a better access to the current. Books as to who actually owns the properties.
Okay.
Okay, so, just a little hiccup, but we're gonna get better at it.
Okay, anything else, looking for a motion to accept the police department DPW clerk's zone and code enforcement court's ACI report. I'll second, any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah. Committee reports, Lillian, you have anything?
I have something in reference to the benches again. They want to know that, um, they proposed this. People that want to be benches. Um, they wanna do another bench now for. And I'm sorry, I don't remember whose name it was. But, um. Yes, yes, that was it. Um. But now they're thinking, they don't so much wanna put all their hinges back here in the fog behind us. They wanna put some up in, um, Thomas Stewart. But they wanna have these, um, these requirements for the benches. I'm not really sure, but, um, I thought we said last time they had to go to the land use, what?
Land use or open space?
Open space.
Open space, right?
Well, I, I think that's the first thing, why we, we'll take this, Ryan, to the open space, discuss it, and then we'll come back and have a look. See, tell you what their recommendations are.
Thank you.
Can you send this to me, uh, in an email?
I can.
And I can forward it to you. All right. You can scan it, Brian? Brian will scan it, and then you'll get it out, Brian?
Thank you, Brian.
Bill, committee report? I'm sorry, Lillian, where are you at?
Where do I begin?
So the school board, like we discussed, looks like, uh, almost a five cent increase, uh. The state cut on five hundred and seventy five thousand, five hundred dollars, and when I found that out on Thursday, a few weeks back, I called Senator Steinhardt. He arranged to have a meeting with the school board that following Monday. He spoke to the governor's chief of staff while we're there, and the following Monday, he met with the governor, chief of staff. To discuss this, and we're waiting for the outcome of that, so, that's a big hit, and, um. I don't know how they're gonna, they're gonna maintain their staff with a five hundred and seventy five thousand dollar cut. Um, so I would anticipate if it's never, if it's not refunded, you're probably gonna see some, um. Classroom sizes, and maybe staff reductions, so. Uh, the other thing is, everybody knows that the ballot, uh, offering question were soundly defeated, and, uh. It's not for lack of what they did, they did get the word out, and I don't know, people are saying maybe they should have done a mass mailing, you know, well. Even in the past, when there was mass mailing, is people don't show up, less than twenty percent showed up, it was nineteen point five something. Showed up to, well, last week, um, but I think people are tired of, you know, making control of tax increases. Although it was overwhelmingly approved with the teachers back in November, and rightly so, uh. I guess they look at facilities a little different, but there's gonna be a need to do something with those buildings, otherwise, they're gonna be moving all their students over to. The elementary school, which they say they have room for, and, um. What they do with the old school, converted into municipal building, I don't think so, we had that, like Doc said. Remember the old school?
Do I remember, I sure do.
So, um, yeah, other than that, uh. That's about it, I mean, there were some issues going on down in Trenton, there's a new bill in, in front of the senate, uh. Uh, it's called the right to read bill, and, uh. Uh, Senator Steinhardt, uh, opposed it, and, and rightly so, and it's. It, it kinda takes away the authority of the school board when it comes to the librarian, as well as the media specialist. They will allow, this bill will allow them to bring whatever books they wanna bring into the library, okay? Without the consent of the school board, and you can't do anything about it. You know, the, the thing, the, the basis of it is, they wanna protect the librarian staff from harassment, okay? And then it goes into detail of, you know, how they wanna do it, and it's bringing in the garbage. Those books that I've earlier discussed, and, you know, I was given a book, and it is really graphic. You know, I, I don't think this librarian would do it, but, you know, and it's not just for schools, it's often for county librarians, but, you know. And the other thing, there was, I sent the, uh, an email to the governor, I mean, to the senator, asking him to oppose the, um. Uh, Pastor Rice on the State School Board Association, she has no educational background in, on a school board, or, uh. Being a teacher, and she's a, you know, a radical left. Uh, individual promoting all that beautiful stuff in her church, that's fine, it's. I digress, it's why I left the church forty two years ago, but you can stop me, but, but, that's my, uh, that's my report for the school district.
Right. I'm gonna ask you if you're done, you're done.
I'll be quick, so, uh, recreation had to move their, the Easter egg hunt to, um, su- this Sunday. So we need to, oh, we need to make a motion, well, it's gonna rain on Saturday, so, uh. Make a motion that they're able to reserve without the fee, the pavilion for three twenty four. They have the start time for the egg hunt at one, so I'm saying twelve, give them enough time for it to three.
I'll second, any questions, comments, especially? All in favor?
All right.
Thanks.
All right, so then, uh, second, the booster club would like to hold. Alright, so then, uh second, the booster club would like to hold their car show, I know we discussed it before. Um they have the May eighteen, rain date, May nineteen. And uh Breck's gonna run the snack stand, so they're in agreement, they black walk out the times and. Um I guess I'm gonna make a motion for that as well to. To waive the fee for the booster club on May eighteen, uh rain date nineteen.
I'll second, any questions, comments, all favor? Aye, names?
They would also like uh May seventeenth, so I, we won't have to do this next year, uh May seventeenth next year. With May eighteenth, the rain day. For car show.
So in twenty twenty-five?
Making a motion to.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussion, all favor? Names?
Alright, last one. So uh Rec wants to hold their second annual basketball um camp. On June twenty-fourth to June twenty-eighth, June twenty-eighth being the rain date. From eight to one P M, and they wanna reserve the basketball lanes. Make the motion that they're able to. Uh reserve the basketball courts from June twenty-fourth to June twenty-eight.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussion, can we get that, the boot captain, get them up then uh?
Well, he's in Brooklyn.
Okay.
I have tickets for tomorrow, but I'm not going, so Sunday, I might see his family if they win, I might go.
Ask him if you'd like to come out.
I have his number, so.
All favor? Done?
Done.
Speaking of basketball courts, can we authorize Joe, you to put up the lights out there and buy them and stuff, or did we never actually?
No, no, never went through with it. It was locked into a. We went to open space, we discussed it.
I don't think we made a recommendation, I think we'll put it back on our agenda. Adults can use it too in the summer now. Okay. Uh Paul?
Alright, so I'll be pretty quick here too. Uh I obviously, we talked about the zoning issues before, so we can skip all over that, uh rescue squad on Saturday, October twelfth. Um. They're gonna request the use of Thomas Stewart Park again for their. Fall festival, which is probably being changed from an October fest to a fall festival. And because of some serious corporate sponsorship, it's gotta take on a new look, but I am gonna make a motion. Uh for the squad to use Thomas Stewart Park again on October twelfth, this is second Saturday.
Are you making a motion?
Uh making a motion, yes.
Any questions, comments, discussion, all favor?
And uh uh just to bring everybody up to date on the. The squad's transformation that's taken place, uh applications have been submitted, uh everything that the state. Has required to date has been submitted, uh they tell us the process is two to six months. Uh with the average being four, we're hoping that it's done a little bit quicker. Um. But they are uh that much closer to moving to a uh. Paid squad, but again, it's a a a. It's a daytime thing, Monday through Friday, it won't be a twenty-four seven service start. Um but we're as close to it now as we've ever been. So that's really about all I got.
Well, that is really kind of a squad. Yeah, but I worry about that day, the day.
Well, well, we we have some. It's good help out there, that's help covering us when we're not able to make the call, so. And a very, very competent stat, I I I really like all of them from Pattonburg Rescue.
That it, that's it, okay, professional reports, Mike Finelli?
Hey, uh it'd be nice and quick, a couple, just a couple of things, uh. I s- I passed out a couple of months ago now, uh. Although maybe a month ago, uh about the twenty twenty-four DOT grant, uh. With the budget discussion and so forth, and and this, this wasn't any big shortfall, is what we, I said last month. But that's out there, it doesn't have to be awarded this year. You know, uh it could go into next year, but that's. I don't know, something for you guys to add to your list of potential projects, I guess.
And you 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 sent us a notice of how much we had to plan the budget for that?
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost a a clean wash.
I think it's ten thousand dollars.
Was it that, was it that much? I thought it was, well, okay. I forgot, so. Um okay, um. Baby's Road, in an effort to close out and get the final amount of money in, uh Shannon, do you, do you recall paying? RSS, that's the last thing.
I think it's actually maybe on this, I think.
Okay. That's the guy real, that was last item, we just gotta get that all closed out and then paid, and then we can submit for the reimbursement, and then. Project's done. Okay, last, but certainly not least, uh Comcast. Uh. And I wanna give Lisa a lot of credit, uh because. There's, there's a fellow by the name of Leon, who's kind of been the primary point of contact, he's with Rhino, who's a subcontractor for for Comcast. He's been the kind of the point man. Uh there's been a lot of Lisa, Mike, Leon emails, and she's been very. Aggressive about keeping him informed, then when his complaints have come in, because since they seem to be going to her, lucky you. Um and and they're, they're been pretty responsive and reactive, I I will say, I mean, there, but there's a lot of. People that are not very happy out there, I'm just really surprised that. Not more people in here tonight, to be honest. Um. Projects moving along, uh they've got a long, still a lot of ways to go, uh. They've, they've run into some uh. Problems along the way, uh and you know, they're. They're doing their best, obviously, we're getting closer now to the spring, so we'll be able to do a better job with the restoration and so forth. Now, this, that's, Brian, you're obviously been. Anything to add? I mean, you can talk about this for a while, you know.
Yeah, no. I saw it coming. I, I got two complaints today, the one being my neighbor across the street, I don't know.
Oh, the water?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that, that that finally got resolved, that it was in the resolution to what, at least. They, they were originally. Blaming Comcast for the, where the water leak.
Yeah.
Well, but then their aqua got involved, and there was some further investigation, and it was pretty much confirmed. Um that it wasn't Comcast.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's alright, uh Lisa, that was, that one's kind of.
That's the last I heard.
Yeah, that's really between the homeowner, I think, and aqua. Okay.
And then um. Jay Carter reached out to me today, they, they threw grass seed down, but it's, it enrolls yard, it's, it looks like a groundhog went under and. You know, it's, it's a mess. Thank you, thank Lisa for, you know, seeing, staying on top of that, he he's obviously not happy, he wants them to come out and. Do something about it.
Well, I. And call me naive, call me uh, you know, optimistic, call me whatever. They're, they're.
I don't think I got that.
Yeah.
No, it was today.
Okay.
They got a, they got a long way to go before they say goodbye to agreements.
The complaints I get more, I I really haven't gotten many for the way the yards are. Uh. In fact, I've been watching my neighborhood, going today, it's a mess, but by the time I leave at night, they got cleaned up, I can do very well, like I can't. But I do think. The one gentleman sent us an email like two months ago, a month and a half. I, for Comcast doing this all the time, I do think their communication level is horrible with residents, like, I can't believe they didn't send out letters explaining it.
What happened to the door hangers? They are doing door hangers, unfortunately some.
And the other thing I find totally unacceptable is, and I've heard this from two people, they went up to talk to them, and nobody spoke English. That's totally unacceptable, you have people in your front yard, you wanna know what's going on, and 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 all they say is no, I play English, no, I play English.
There's definitely, there's definitely a language.
There's definitely a communication issue. And I'm, I'm, that to me is just totally unacceptable, in fact, I had two guys walking in my backyard today, I didn't know why they were back there, but I'm thinking. There is a pole back there for a neighbor's house and stuff, so they might even look at that, I don't know, but, and it may not have been there, because T C P N L has guys going around right now. Checking the poles. Well, so I'm not sure if it was Comcast or, you know, the company is doing a power life, but. I I have gotten two complaints, and I agree with them a hundred percent, like I, I I can't believe Comcast are doing this all the time, doesn't have a better system set up. Where they send out letters or something in the, or like he said, the door knob or something, but I think their communication is lacking. I haven't gotten any complaints about the thinking, the thought of it.
Well, you should consider yourself, because there, there's lots.
Well.
Apparently, some groups are better than others.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's always the case, that is always the case, if you've got multiple, like, uh uh contractors set up, uh. Group one and group two, two, one is always better than the other.
So the D team is up in Bay Center.
But like I said, for them doing this all the time, I think they have a better.
You're right, you're right, we, I mean, we're all trying as much as we can, uh whatever.
I got one thing, Mike, I spoke to Jeff Long and Ingraham, and that first structure is almost up, they're putting the. I think that looks like it's. But you know, I asked him, you know, because the school district's concerned about students, and he doesn't think before January, the first quarter of next year, they feel. They'll start seeing residents, as quick as they're going now, he still doesn't think there'll be uh students in this year, so. Little saving.
Uh maybe, maybe a couple, yeah, right, it's gonna be close, I would think, yeah.
I I can't believe that, one day there was nothing there, next day, you know, four walls were up today, the roof's up, you know, and.
I I didn't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen it that far, okay.
Anybody else for Mike, I think, Mike Leary, everything for executive?
That's correct, Mary.
Old business, uh new facility update, which is no update, just disappointing, I guess, right, Joe? Bits came in extremely high.
Some bits were missing.
Yeah.
So the fire and the uh mechanical bits are missing. Which.
Fire suppression.
That's fire suppression, which.
I think we've got to talk about some of that, an executive with Mike, so. Okay, new business. Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution thirty-four twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-five twenty-four. Uh vote for uh resolutions authorizing redemption of taxes, anybody gonna make a motion? I'll make it, I'll second, any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion for resolution thirty-six twenty-four, making emergency temporary appropriations with budget for this year, I'll make that motion in one second. Any questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-seven twenty-four to uh issue a fifty-fifty raffle to the fire company on premise, anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to introduce orders number one oh one twenty twenty-four to amend revise and supplement chapter seven entitled Traffic Subsection four one. This is still the truck stuff, right?
So, this is exactly what we had last month, except we, we put back in that tier, fine schedule.
Okay, anyone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to adopt. Orders number one oh three twenty twenty-four, N G D E P M S four permit. Which is what, Lisa?
That, that's this one or the stormwater. Uh ordinance upgrades that were required to adopt.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Second, any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept, which regret the resignation of Austin La- Laika, I I'll never get his last name right. He's a VPW part-time employee, he was a very good employee, uh I don't wanna step on you, Paul, it's your department.
No, no, that's fine.
I've come pretty fond of the kid in the last couple of years, I say kid, I'll go to my age, I'll be part of the whole. And uh he's always done a good job, he's been very loyal to the township. Um. In addition to the work of the DPW, he responded to first aid calls, fire calls. So we're losing a lot with Austin, and uh, like you said, he was a good, good team player here, and we're gonna miss him, so uh. I wish him well, and I guess he accepted the job with the county. Uh road department, so I perfectly understand why he's gone, and uh I wish him all of that. So anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
And I'm just gonna comment that saying, uh the town, the squad, the fire department. Uh his knowledge, he's been with the road department for quite some time, um it's gonna be hard to replace. I'm gonna miss him a lot.
Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we're authorized DPW to advertise for a yearly part-time position to replace Austin.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, discussions? Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor? Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Do we actually have a contract here for affordable?
Uh I don't have a contract here, I just have the quotes and the paperwork that I have forwarded. Um but the existing contract we have for what we need throughout the year would cost us. Eight thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, and the new quote I got, which has a state, a state contract. Would annual cost would be four thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. And if I'd like to authorize to have them start April first, because that's what I need to increase the. Amount of border johns that we have here for the uh spring sport. I gotta get an additional. Eight, eight border johns here for the spring.
So we're looking for a motion to accept United?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make it.
Anybody a second? Second, questions, comments, discussion?
My only comment is, and 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 I can't argue with the, the pricing on it, it's, you know, it's literally half of what it was. Um I do know that Low Pack Con and Hope Township last year went to them because of the numbers. And they actually ended up switching back to A and W, even though it was hard, because of the cleanliness of the units. But I'm hearing from neighboring communities that there hasn't been any issues with that, so I'm hoping that there aren't any issues with that.
With United?
With United, I mean, I just, it is so, how how does one do this for half, but that's a whole nother ballgame.
Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Penney?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to. Uh reserve the municipal pavilion, the sixth grade and the middle school, and request for the fee waiver, anybody make a motion? I'll make it, anybody want a second?
Second.
What, what day, is there a date?
I had my hand up. Four, twenty-five, twenty-three, yeah.
Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Nice.
Crew twenty-two redevelopment area, I didn't put that on there.
No, we, we did, yeah, we do, we didn't need to discuss, but maybe with Mike and. Maybe, but, right, I I guess, but we need to, apparently. We fell a little short that once we did this, we were supposed to. Give that area a specific list of things that we would accept, you know, be it a. A banquet facility, in a hotel, or a drive-through restaurant, or whatever, I mean, restaurants are approved in the B two unit.
Yeah.
But not the drive-through, and we're currently making Wendy's jump through.
Yeah, I I think we'll load a loops, but. If it's a true area redevelopment, I think what we wanna do is bypass someone with red tape to the land use court, correct?
Yeah, nor- normally what happens is, the people that have requested the redevelopment area submit. Like a plan, and then we would adopt that by ordinance, but.
Well, they, nobody requested, we, we did this, right?
So, but yeah, there's, there's a plan that you do by ordinance that lists, you know, what you want there.
Exactly, okay.
So that needs to be done ASAP though, because it's gonna help a few other people in that neck of the woods.
Too late for Wendy's, obviously.
Yeah, which I did kinda tell them that, and they're cool about moving through.
Well, I think they knew what they were getting into, and I mean. Yeah, but I mean, again, we're. Yeah, but I mean, again, we're worried about revenue when we slow things down.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. System, though, unfortunately, that's why, that's why it needs to get changed.
Okay, uh, Thorntree Fire Company. Looking for a motion to, uh, appoint new members to the fire department. Uh, Mark Skudero, actually, Mark, you're gonna join?
Yeah.
Mark Skudero is a firefighter. And Michael Trapp says a fire police. I'll make a motion, second. Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Glad to see you coming, thanks. Is, is Michael here, Tim?
No, he's not here.
Okay, okay, uh, roll call.
Mayor Barson.
Yes.
Mister Baylor.
Yes.
Mister Bean.
Yes.
Mister Penney.
Yes.
Mister McDermott, yes.
I make a motion, we approve the blue light application for Mark Skudero, the firefighter. Anybody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And. The dioxide, we have any updates on that or anything to talk about?
No, we, we are still, uh, in the same position, uh, waiting until we determine if we can, you know, bond for that work to begin.
Mike, are they any closer to? Doing it over in Franklin?
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we're just putting their. Finishing touches, the bows, whatever you want to call it, on the final couple revisions from the week, cause we needed railroad approval. And county approval and so forth. Obviously, it's a lot more extensive over Franklin.
Right, cause we're going to try to piggyback onto Franklin when this gets done, right?
I, the, I don't know, or, or.
I would have thought that.
Well, that would make sense.
Makes sense, right?
I mean, obviously, the, the agreement situation with dioxide is established and organized.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, it's somewhere near.
So, well, yeah, sure, there, if the contractor's gonna be out there.
Right.
We, but I, I guess the question is about, you're still gonna have to go to bid. Yeah, I don't think there's any way to get around that.
No, yeah, it's, you know.
No, it's way over, it's gonna be way over the bid threshold, I mean, my goodness, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what.
So what, what do we need to do to be prepared?
Should be going to construction, I would say, so.
Alright, what do we need to do to be prepared?
Come up with the funding.
Yeah.
Well, I thought the funding, well, I, well, I thought. No, we gotta. The funding mechanisms in place, we just have to pay for it first before we get reimbursed, correct? D E P said they were gonna pay for it, but we had to pay for it first.
We have to pay first.
So.
So we have to adopt those ordinances and resolutions.
Right.
In advance, and then we would need to bond.
Alright, so, we should get started with some of that.
Yeah, that, that's.
Which actually falls into attorney labories. Real house then, correct? Yes. Or Lisa, can you write, uh, do we have copies and you can write with?
D E P gave us everything that we.
Okay, so, alright.
We'll have Mike review it, but I think we look at it.
Have him review it and then be ready to go.
Yeah, I think I, I might have heard him reviewed it.
So when do we go out for bid? If, if they're gonna start a project in the summer. That's gonna be June, you know, we're meeting in April, I mean. You know, don't we have to come up with bid specs and all that other stuff? I mean, who does that? You know, we're, we're granting, uh. You know, and.
I mean, how big can the bid spec be? We need to drag it, dig a one and a half mile long. Uh, uh, trench, forty-two inch down.
Like, whatever, what it is, we don't. Well, but I think, Bill. We have more time than that, and I say that because. We could do, Jeff. At, you know, after the Franklin thing's done, that's an enormous, you're gonna get the same contract, but I mean, you might get another contract.
Yeah, I would think it'd be, uh, we would get a better bid if. I don't know who they're getting, let's say it's Montana again, like what, what they did.
Montana's clearly gonna bid, I mean. Uh, whether, you know, who, I, I, I will certainly keep you posted as the Franklin goes forward. And who gets the contract and so forth, I mean.
But we should have these resolutions and stuff.
Oh, that part of it, definitely.
Yes, yes.
And then D E P finalized the contract with us and then.
Well, then, then the bond is gonna take a couple of months, so, yeah, you're, you got stuff to do, right?
Yeah.
The next month, we'll have that. Ready to go then?
Yeah, we should, I, I think we ought to start thinking about what, what we're gonna have to bond, though. I don't wanna go down another rabbit hole, but just, you know, we gotta be able to pay for it.
I'll bring back all those documents again, and I'll, uh, bring up the estimates and everything from the auditor, I've looked at it, everybody looked at this last year, so.
Okay. Okay, um.
Well, before we go to correspondence, uh, on the new business. We discussed the S R O officer, so do we need a motion to say that we're going to fund the S R O officer for twenty? Twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Or are we just gonna?
Do you wanna discuss that?
Yeah, we can, okay, we can discuss things, and then we can come out, okay.
I'm fine with that. Was the X R O included in the rights notice that we sent to everybody else? Let's give her a quick call.
Okay. Well, well, we're talking about executives, see what Mike guides us through a discussion. Okay, uh, anyway, we, is everybody done with the new business?
We received a, an email from a woman, she has an autistic son who had a problem of running away. And she's asking for, uh, signs on Monroe Drive. Are you familiar with this request, Rich?
No.
No?
No, I'm sorry, what was it again then?
It's Sun Monroe Drive, an autistic child who has a. Usually runs, runs away, runs off often. The woman's asking, I guess, for signs that autistic child in the area, I've seen him around.
Um, yeah, she hasn't come to me about that.
I, I, I don't see any reason not to do it, Joe, is, do we, is there any parameters on how far we can put him, or where you, like? Like, if he runs away, I don't know.
And, and I mean, really, what sign?
But, at the same time, if it could help him, I have no problem with it, so. Just, Rich, maybe you can reach out to her and speak to her and say what.
Yeah, if I, I don't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, so if you have the correspondence, I'll.
Yeah, thanks for being there to get that. Okay.
Mike, do you have any experience with this sign?
You know, well, I, with a sign like that, that is strictly what we'll call an advisory sign, there's no. Specs on where it needs, I would think somewhere near the person's house and maybe one other one here, you know.
Couple houses away.
Yeah.
There used to be a sign across from the State Farm. You know, uh.
Well.
That they're on Greenwood Street, and I think it said. Uh, special needs school bus stop or something like that, you know, for years it was up there, I don't know if it's still there.
We, we put up that death child signs that we have.
Are those signs?
Did I order up them signs, uh? I don't have them stopped.
Let, let's see what's the chief in and the homeowner come up.
Joe, are those signs on South Main, being that the.
Their counties, they put them up. For, for the boy that was in that area.
Yeah.
And they thought ours, they were counted, so.
And we put one up, a couple up, a couple years ago for the death child left by Beaky, didn't we?
Did we actually end up putting signs up there? I don't believe so, Joe, did she move on Beaky? No, she's still there, but I don't believe there's signs up.
No, I don't.
No, we put them, we put them in a different area.
Different, huh, okay, I'm wrong, okay.
Many, many years ago.
Okay. Any other correspondence we need to address tonight, Lisa? Or just letting us know that it's here and gave it to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna move public comment up, so people have to sit through executive section if they don't want to. I'll make a motion, we open executive section. I mean, publicly comment.